It's 5:00 PM. This is the county council meeting of Monday, April 24th, 2023. Before we move on, will the clerk to council please take the attendance?
Councilmember Taverneck?
Present.
Councilmember Reitz? Absent. Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, virtual.
Councilmember Howard?
Present.
Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present and online.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Here.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Present.
Chairman Passamet?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all rise for the pledge to the flag and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord of wisdom, we pray that you will bless this meeting. Help us have fun, yet productive discussions that will broaden our perspective. Help us to take the various ideas presented and think of ways to flesh them out. If we do disagree, let it be on the content and not personality conflicts or power plays. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us toward the best way to take action to accomplish our goals. Finally, help us to tackle all the topics we need to discuss, come up with excellent solutions, and leave this meeting inspired and on time. Amen. Okay. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. May I have a member of council and second the approval of tonight's agenda?
So move.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion to approve. Ms. Taverneck makes the second to approve. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next, I would ask a member of council to move and second to approve the minutes of March 13th and March 20th of 2023.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, for the minutes of the 13th and 20th. Any discussion? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. We are at our administrator's report. Mr. Greenway, good evening.
Thank you. My Mr. Chairman, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and citizens who are here with us in the room and watching us on the county channel. As I am prone to do with my administrator's report, I always like to introduce our fine team we have at Beaufort County, and tonight is no exception. Mr. Daniel Anderson here to my right works in our IT department. He is the physical security specialist. He has been with us for 21 years. Dan administers and maintains the county's camera security system consisting of 500-plus and counting cameras, the employee can security entry badge system, and the control system that controls 400-plus doors, gates, and counting throughout Beaufort County government buildings and properties. A little bit of personal stuff about Dan is that has a great testimony here in that Jesus is the head of Dan's life. He has a beautiful wife, Nari, and two wonderful children, Jamari and Daniel. Jamari, 19, Daniel, 17. Dan also served as a MLC town council member and mayor pro temp from 2013 to 2017, and his goal is to be the town's first African-American mayor. You didn't run last time around. Let me just say a little bit personal about Dan. Dan was the one that actually set up my computer whenever I came here back in 2018. First time I heard his voice, I was like, man, you ever do any radio or TV stuff? Because he's got a great voice. So I'm gonna turn the microphone over here and let you all hear this voice if he wants to say anything to you, so.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
God is good.
Yes, he is.
And all the time.
He is good.
All right. First of all, I'd like to recognize Shakia Polite for recognizing me. I was telling my wife last night that, believe it or not, I've been with Beaufort County for more than half of my life. And you know, the strange thing is when I first came to Beaufort County, I came as the mailman, and I advanced to IT. And the funny thing is, I wasn't planning on staying at Beaufort County. I was a school teacher initially, and then I didn't like teaching, so I came to Beaufort County as a temp from the temp agency, and that's how I got here. And God willing, Ms. Anna Hayes, who was my first boss here at the county, decided to hire me instead of letting me go back to the temp service. So with that being said, 20-plus years later, I'm still here. And when I loved teaching, I had no idea what I wanted to do because I just loved teaching. I didn't, because I didn't like it, so I didn't renew my contract. So I was lost. And when I came here, I would just say, well, I'll stay here until I can find the next thing to do and move on to that. But lo and behold, I'm still here. And you know what? I'm glad I did. It was a good decision. Because while I was here, I got married, had two beautiful kids, built a house, you know, made a nice life for myself. So I think I made the right decision. So again, thank you for the recognition, council, ministry. Thank you.
Our next employee this evening is, works in our mosquito control department, as if you all cannot tell by the logo on his shirt. This is Gerard, Gerard Houston. He is a mosquito control technician. He's been with us three years and two months. He conducts mosquito surveillance, larva sighting, and adult sighting, adult deciding activities to control the population of mosquitoes. Gerard works to prevent the spread of any mosquito-borne diseases, all while making a living, all while making a living or visiting in Beaufort County more enjoyable for those who live here and also who come here to visit us as tourists. Gerard is, was born and raised in Beaufort County. He is a single parent who loves spending time with his family. He is a people person who is always seeking new learning opportunities. One unique fact about Gerard, I always love people that are living in this area and that they're allergic to shellfish. You have a hard time.
Yeah, I do.
That's crazy. That's crazy. I'm gonna let you say if you want to say your favor service.
Thank you. I have nothing. I just want to say, thank you, everybody.
And by the way, I'll make one final announcement. Rosalyn?
How are you? Good.
Rosalyn Smalls works in our Board of Voter Registration Elections. She's a voter registration election specialist. She's been with us for seven years, and she manages the weekly operations of the Bluffton Satellite Office and the Bluffton Early Voting Center. Very important job. Appreciate your service. Rosalyn is a mother and a grandmother to an honor roll middle schooler.
I appreciate this. Great stuff. So anyway, so if you want to say anything?
I'd just like to say, thank the council for recognizing me, and I thank my supervisor, Ms. Marie Smalls, for nominating me as an employee. Thank you.
Thank you. One additional comment tonight. I want to just thank the Marine Corps Air Station officials who invited us out and presented us with a tremendous show over two beautiful days on Saturday and Sunday here. Those of us that work in this building, we got to experience the Blue Angels over several days because they were flying over our building for practice and all of that. One of the things I will tell the council, you may have noticed that there were some Beaufort County vehicles out on the runway out there at the air show, and that was a result of us entering into an intergovernmental services agreement with the air station. They had difficulty finding SUVs and vans that they could rent for the personnel there. So we entered into an agreement with them to allow them to use our Beaufort County vehicles for the air, week of the air shows. So I want to thank Kim Fleming, David Trell, Mary Ryan, those folks that we deal with for inviting us all out. It was a great day, and the commanding officer of the air station as well for hosting us in his chalet on Saturday and Sunday. So thank you all very much. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are at the citizen comments. We actually have three citizen comments this evening. Those of you who want to speak on agenda items, when we get to the public hearing, we see that there is a group of people that want to specifically talk in the public hearing portion of an item, and then we have our second citizen comments at non-agenda items. It will take 15 minutes for each of those to be done. Please, when you come to the podium, don't be afraid. We're not here to bite you. We want to hear from you within a three-minute period of time. It's as if you and I are the only ones in the room, and you're talking to me, even though you're talking to county council. So that's the fun part, okay? So let us begin. The first person who would like to speak about an agenda item is Ed Atkins. Ed? And you will have three minutes, sir?
The agenda item is, I just want to say one thing to the county council now, just what this on Pine Island and the Gulf Coast. Pine Island is a very important place.
You need to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Pine Island is a very important place, and I want everybody to understand this and understand this good. When fish comes in this area, they come in this area to feed. When you put all these houses, all these docks on that water, it destroys the shell bed. Once you destroy the shell bed, then there goes the marsh. Fish comes in from the ocean to lay eggs in that marsh. That's about one of the only fish left. Almost an hour. Now, once the marsh is gone, there will be no more eggs we laid, no fish will come in this area, no crab, no nothing. There'll be this like contaminated water, and there ain't nothing going to swim in that water too much. That's it.
Thank you very much. Our second person is Tom Donahue. Mr. Donahue?
Appreciate this opportunity to talk. I'm going to skip my first paragraph because of what you said, sir, and I appreciate that. As most of us are aware, the love of money is the root of all evil. This has been so for a few thousand years, and now has become the source of most all the terrible things going on in our world today. I have come to a place in my own personal life that there is always an opportunity for growth and good to come from the many challenges and bad things that happen in our lives. Our Gullah Gichi neighbors were enlightened to this very thing a long time ago. I believe that as we open these meetings in prayer, maybe we could open our minds to God's will for protecting the will of the people, which to me is rather obvious what the will of the people is. I also know that there is alternatives to this development through various funding. Maybe we could put an education center on Pine Island to teach people about the amazing Gullah Gichi history and culture. Also teach them about the amazing, unique Low Country and the extremely fragile environment and ecosystem. At some point, we have to say no to allowing further destruction of our planet. I have worked outdoors my whole life, much of it at sea and on inland waters. I have witnessed firsthand the many issues that we have created to rapidly degrade Mother Earth, mostly through chemicals and plastic. I've personally seen the plastic island in the Sargasso Sea, and I cried for a week. That's another subject that I would like to take up at a further time. We are all stakeholders in the protection of our planet, and we have children and grandchildren, and, you know, I hope that we can all come together on a solution to this problem. But I personally see nothing positive that could come out of this. I really don't. Everything from the people's will right down to what's left of the fisheries and so forth. I thank you guys, and take care.
Thank you. Paula, you're next.
On April 10th, 2023, I attended a Beaufort County council meeting. Prior to the start of the meeting, I heard Elvio Trupiano say, and I quote, "I'm sorry that it's come to this. This is not what I intended to happen," end quote. What, during the meeting, Mr. Trupiano said, and I quote, "A sea of misinformation," end quote, "has been shared." What I do know is that his intent is to build a gated community, golf course, private homes and cottages and docks on Pine Island. All of those plans go against the current CPO. Don't delay the vote.
Inez Miller. Inez? Last person on this list is Lynn Greeley.
Hi, yes. Lynn Greeley, and I would like to give my three minutes to Skip Hogland.
Mr. Hogland, you do realize that if you are speaking on this topic, you will not speak again on this topic?
Correct. I will speak my three minutes at the very end.
That's correct.
Ms. Greeley has asked me to speak for her because she doesn't feel like speaking.
We understand.
And I'm gonna speak at the end as well, and I hope everybody sticks around for my next speech at the very, very end. Skip Hogland, Windmill Harbor. Why hasn't a master land plan ever been created into perpetuity so we'd have the tools necessary to save ourselves from overdevelopment, untenable traffic, and ongoing runoff pollution caused by encroachment of our creeks, our rivers, and our estuaries? Polluted oysters is the first bad sign. One million years to create and destroyed in 30 years by having no master land plan. Why has one main road and bridge all the way to I-95 never been taken into consideration? What does South Carolina DOT say about these, these minimum roads and their maximum usage? With Bluffton, Hilton Head, Hardyville, out of control, overdevelopment, 200 here, 300 there, no master land plan. Has any thought been given as to what will happen in 10 years from now? Not to mention how long it will take to get off of Beaufort and Hilton Head Island in a hurricane or your next trip to the airport? Has any thought been given about increased wrecks and trash? Has any thought been given about increased wrecks and traffic delays and emergency vehicles' time in reaching hospitals? Also, future road repairs, delays, and negative impact of 3 million tourists versus 100,000 local residents that we now experience? Tourism is welcome, but not at locals' expense. What does DOT say about these same 3 million tourists entering Beaufort, Bluffton, and Hilton Head on these very few roads and one bridge? Do you think it's time to stop kicking the can down the road? The Hilton Head Bridge is nothing but a stent for your heart and will do little than nothing over the next 10 years. It's a $300 million waste of taxpayers' money. I am a 47-year resident. I moved here for the Charles Fraser vision of a low-key city retirement and resort that took nature and the environment into consideration. Like the song goes by Joni Mitchell, they took all the trees and put them in a tree museum and they charged the people $1.50 to see them. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you have until it's gone? It's all not your fault. You are just another long line of elected officials unable to control the greedy developers, the crooked town managers and lawyers that they're in conflict with their development clients, many tied to the chamber tourism interests and the illegal profits and secret council members' special interest greed. Unfortunately, it's too late to replay all the damage. Only will get worse with no master land plan in perpetuity. We are at six pounds in a five-pound bag. We're heading towards 10 pounds, like a slow-growing cancer. If you don't stop or remove it, it will eventually kill you. Also, defund these chambers of millions in aid tax money and hospitality tax monies unaccounted for and add this to Senator Davis's 1% tax and let the tourists pay, not the locals, to buy lands on Pine Island and other places to protect. Technology promotes tourism for free, not this crooked chamber and these CBBS. We have all the tourism we need. It'll happen naturally through the internet. This is not Charleston or Myrtle Beach, nor do we want it this way. The good news is this council is affected like all of us in this room to fix this for your family, friends, children, and all residents. Thank you.
Okay, that will end our public comment for this section. We'll move on to the liaison and committee reports. Yes, ma'am? Who are you?
Inez Miller.
Who?
Inez Miller, I heard you mention my name.
Yes, I did.
Okay. I was in the back waiting for him to finish speaking.
You were supposed to speak before him. Go ahead.
She wanted to let me in the door, but anyway. Good evening, council. My name is Inez Miller. I'm with the Center for Airs Property. I am also a resident of St. Helena Island and I ask that you not delay this Pine Island situation, that you strengthen the CPO. And remember that each of you were elected by the people of Beaufort County, each and every one of you, whether they live out in Grace Hill or on Hilton Head, you were elected by those people to represent us. That CPO was done 20 years ago. You need to help strengthen it and uphold it, not allow someone to come in, threaten to sue the residents, the staff, the lawyers in Beaufort County. Help us to keep that property, buy it back. Give it to the residents of St. Helena that's here today that's represented it. Please, please, I implore you, I beg you, to please consider the people and what they have done so far and stop delaying this. Please, I'm begging you. That developer did some things way before now, met with certain people to try to find out what he needs to do in this county for entertainment and all that type of stuff. That is wrong to do. Now, why are we here today? We shouldn't even be here. That CPO was in place and need to be acted upon and taken care of. There are too many people on St. Helena Island who has property with land, keeping it, paying their taxes. Myself, Sirah Reynolds, Queen Quett, and many others are doing fundraisers. There's a Gullah Geechee Fund. There's Mr. Rah Reynolds Gullah Grub Fund. We are in the community trying to help people save their property and stay on their land. We don't need that. That's going to up taxes for the people of St. Helena and that's wrong. We trying to save our Gullah Geechee people, white, black, like Martin Luther King. It's about all of us, not just one of us. Keep that in your minds, please, each and every one of you. Strengthen the CPO. Help the residents, help the people. We don't want it to be like Hilton Head Island, the Fusky Island. We want to remain where we live at. There are fishermen here today. Stay in fishermen, please. That fishermen, fisherwomen, our oysters are impacted, our food chain is impacted, the environment is impacted. That sewer system and new homes is not a good thing for that area. Please, anywhere, that amount of sewage.
Everybody stand up.
Please, do that for us. Help us. Don't hinder us. Remember, we put you in your feet. We put you in your feet. I'm sorry if it sounds like I'm shouting, but please uphold the CPO and help us. I beg you. If I have to get on my knees today and beg each one of you, I'm willing to do it. I'm willing to do it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We will pick this up with the item on the agenda when we have the public hearing again. So we'll close the citizen comments at this time. Is there any member who wishes to give a report from either their committee or their liaison? Ms. Howard?
Yes, I would like to brag on our, Mr. Fralix and his staff. We had an outstanding meeting Thursday night about re-imaging Revolt Road. We had a great turnout. Place was full. Also, stormwater met on site at Brewer Memorial Park on Ladies Island, which is a very good example of how all our boat landings could look with stormwater control, boat landing very nice. That's my report.
Thank you. Any others? Ms. Tabernak?
At our finance meeting, I believe we accepted grants from the opioid, okay. So last Thursday, I dropped into Bluffton Library to see the Narcan event. I'm going to call it an event. I don't know what that means. But anyway, by 4:30, they were out of Narcan, but they still had people lined up and amazingly, some of them were from Sun City. And so people are interested in this opioid epidemic and the Drug and Alcohol Department with the library provided a great service. They gave out, you know, literature and put you on a list if you wanted to get the Narcan. But I thought it was a great service for the community. I know it was at four of our libraries. I just happened to drop into Bluffton.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we are now at the action items. Our first item is our approval of the consent agenda, which is on our third page. There are four items on the consent agenda, so I need a motion and second from council members to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Ms. Howard, you make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item number 10 is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the redemption of the outstanding Beaufort County, South Carolina, General Obligation Bonds Series 2013A and other matters related thereto. A motion, please?
I'll motion that.
Oh, you can make it.
Ms. Brown makes the motion. Ms. Tabernak makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this item will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item number 11 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance for text amendments to the Community Development Code, Article 3, Division 3.4, Section 3.4.50, Cultural Protection Overlay, Section 3.4.10, Purpose, and Division 3.1, Section 3.170, Land Use Definitions, Recreational Facility, Golf Course, to update definitions, regulations, and standards in the Cultural Protection Overlay Zone. We are now at the public hearing. There are several people who wish to speak at the public hearing. We will have 15 minutes and the first person who wishes to speak is Queen Quett. Queen, please.
Mr. Chairman, could I put the motion on the floor first?
We don't need the motion. That will come after we hear from the public. Then we will do the motion and second for us to discuss that. Queen Quett?
Good evening. Good evening, all. How are the children doing this evening? Okay. I guess ain't too much if we were been here, dealing here this evening and things like that while I crack my teeth because I can't yet it hardly. I want to start off with saying if honey know where honey they from, honey ain't going to know where honey they going. This year, they also said, "As some kofa, go back and fetch it." So if honey never yet it is you. What it means is that which you have left behind, sometimes you have to go back and look at it so you know where you're headed in the future. And so this is a term that's used throughout the African diaspora and throughout the Gullah Geechee Nation. And I bring it up tonight because I think in this case, we need to go back and look at some things. And in particular, I went back and looked at the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In it, I found two different sections, one called the 2040 Action Playbook and another called Spotlight on St. Helena. In both of these, in the Action Playbook, which starts on page 135 of our Comprehensive Plan for this county, St. Helena Island is specifically referenced, Gullah Geechee culture is specifically referenced. And in fact, the action plan has an entire section on pages 144, 145, and 146 that specifically focuses on our culture in C 2.2. It says, "In partnership with community members, including the Gullah Geechee Sea Island Coalition and the St. Helena Island Cultural Protection Overlay District Committee, which I currently chair, conduct a baseline cultural resource inventory and vulnerability assessment of buildings, archaeological sites, traditionally-used roads, waterways, water access points, fishing areas, burial sites, and sacred grounds to inform protection and stewardship practices for Gullah Geechee communities." As I heard in January, as I heard April 10th, in this same room, Gullah Geechee culture's epicenter is historic St. Helena Island. Where I'd have been here, I ain't just get here. I know come here. You see? And so here it is that this being in a legal document that our county has upheld due to community input, even in the midst of a pandemic, I would call your attention back to this so you know where you're going and vote on strengthening the Cultural Protection Overlay District in accordance with the action plan and the spotlight on St. Helena. The spotlight starts on page 36 and it says, "Gullah Geechee culture is under extreme stress from rapid coastal development, population growth, lack of recognition, and financial hardship." I have taken Gullah Geechee culture to the world, so we're recognized. This county recognized us. Uphold what we've said and what the rest of the community has said to do for us, for St. Helena Island. I appreciate your work. I appreciate your last vote to strengthen the CPO and I hope you do it again tonight. And I have this document from business owners on St. Helena that I will submit along with the 11,132 signatures that all of you should have received earlier today to also say likewise. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mike Hughes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Hughes with Thompson Nut and Engineering Company. I've been retained by LVO to assess the property of Pine Island for civil engineering and land development. There seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding of what is ahead of you today. This property, Pine Island, will be developed. It will either be 166 single-family residential lots or it will be another low-impact development that was established by LVO who's been working on this for over 18 months. So I just want to make sure right off the bat, I'm not looking to argue the legality. I'm looking to argue whether this is something that is detrimental to the culture. I'm just saying from an engineering perspective and from an environmental perspective, there are two plans that have been proposed. One is a low-impact development plan that does include golf and the other one is traditional single-family residential development. And so if you look at the two, we talked about traffic. There's significantly less traffic proposed if you do a low-impact development golf community. There are less residents if you do the low-impact development golf community. In terms of docks, there has been a proposal to have less than 10 docks on this property. There can be as many as 75 to 100 docks and there's a stretch along the property that would actually cause, three-quarter mile stretch to have docks along it that would cause you to take 15 minutes to get down Village Creek. So these impacts are real and they can be done. And I think the residential development, under the ordinance as it stands today or tomorrow, these lots can be developed. The only thing that we're trying to do is accomplish a development that is lighter touch on the land, deserves more open space, and has additional forestry preservation. So as I stand up here, I just ask you, please look at what's being proposed. There are alternatives, but the property will be developed. So I'd like to make sure we all work together to do it in the best manner possible for the community as a whole and also to make sure we are sensitive to the environment and to the community around us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trupiano?
Thank you for having me here. LVO Trupiano, owner of Pine Island. Documentation in front of you is a series of materials that you've gotten most of and I'm going to elaborate on the last one tonight, the additional information packet. We've provided this information so we can all be on the same page. I encourage the public to visit pineislandplan.com so that they can also be on the same page. All these materials, Tony will do his job and go get them for us. But I want to discuss facts with you guys tonight. Fact number one, the blue tab is about private ownership. Since the 1800s, the owners of Pine Island have been from New York, New York, New York, New York, New York, Estill, not myself, from New York. Fact number two, historic use. There are two locations on my property that are on the National Register of Historic Places. The categories in the areas of significance area on the registry itself are entertainment and recreation. The property has been a private recreation retreat, or in today's terms, a resort, for over 150 years. In fact, one of the listings on the registry itself asks the question, is there a resort lifeway that can compare or contrast with the plantation pattern? I encourage everyone to read those listings. Fact number three, the green tab, collaboration and engagement. This document in front of you is intended to respectfully show the context and length of our collaboration with community leadership. As you can see, the date on that distribution is exactly one year ago from yesterday. The plan has not changed a single bit. We don't say one thing and do another, period. Fact number four, the CPO was adopted in 99. According to the minutes from the council meetings in 99, the CPO committee meetings from December 13th of last year, properties that were gated prior to 99 were grandfathered in. My property's been gated for 53 years. Fact number five, the red tab. When the CPO was originally drafted, properties that were subdivided, planned to be subdivided under an existing PUD or planned to be developed were excluded from the overlay's boundaries. This document in front of you, right here in front of me, is from 1958. Comes from the Beaufort County Register of Deeds. I'm not trying to rewrite history here, but rather put things in context for everyone to allow for a compromise. You have a team behind me that has devised a model that not only protects and preserves the current property, but activates the property specifically designated to serve this community. You have a staff that has been working their tails off to protect the very people that have thrown haymakers at them. They should be commended for their patience because they care. While this agenda item is seemingly not about me, I'm proud because there's no power greater for change than people discovering what they care about. That's why we're here. Thank you for your time and everything you do. Appreciate it.
Arnold Brown?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council for their opening prayer and I'd like to thank you for approving the first reading of the CPO as well. One of the words that I've heard several times this evening is misunderstanding and misinformation. And so I just want to bring up a few items. The Emancipation Proclamation, I Google it, was one of the most misunderstood documents ever written, according to Google. The King James Version of the Bible is very difficult to read, so a lot of us don't read it. We read another version. The writings of Shakespeare, I find, is difficult to read. I tried to, bought one at a yard sale and I kind of... I tried to, bought one at a yard sale, and I kind of probably threw it away. Rap music, poetry, other things are hard to find, hard to understand. If your doctor does not know why you're continually sick, they are going to consult with other doctors, and they're going to do more tests, and they may eventually send you to Charleston to get you some help. The CPO written in April 1995 really didn't need to be strengthened, revised, or changed. It did not have a loophole. There is no loophole in that document, and I can explain that to you. It is a mistake to suggest or interpret that the CPO of April 1999 had its loophole and allows a golf course or gated community. It is not there. President Lincoln is dead, Shakespeare is dead, the 12 apostles are dead, thousands of doctors are alive, and some of the authors who wrote that document in April 1999, they're here, and they have been consulted, and they contend, there are witnesses that there is no loophole there. Okay? The Supreme Court in 1926 upheld ordinances that someone could not come in and change the ordinance. Supreme Court Decision 1926. The document that you have before you that was passed out, if you read the second paragraph down, "Without limiting, limitating the foregoing and foregoing the following specific new uses are deemed to be incompatible." The key word is "following." If I said, "Everybody following me will speak French," okay, that means after me. Therefore, everything below that is prohibited. Paragraph number two, "This use includes," those things are included, excluded. Under golf course, number three, "This use includes," that means that that's, it's not as meaning that that's an exception, that's excluded, excluded. So when you read this carefully...
Please wrap up.
Thank you, but thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm available after the meeting to give you more clarifications on what I passed out to you. Thank you.
Mr. Hoagland, do you have anything new to say at the public hearing for this document?
No, I have my own three-minute, not agenda, three-minute comment.
No, we're on the public hearing for this specific item.
No, I do not. I have one at the end for...
I understand that, but you signed up on the public hearing portion of this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I said all I need to say.
Then we'll have the last person, Marilyn Hemingway.
My name is Marilyn Hemingway. I am president and founder of the Gullah Gichi Chamber of Commerce and the Gullah Gichi Chamber Foundation, and for full biography, I am also commissioner with the Gullah Gichi Culture Heritage Corridor. But tonight, tonight I'm speaking as president of the Gullah Gichi Chamber. I have long admired the cultural pride and resilience of my people in Beaufort County, who have led the way in cultural preservation with the support of previous and current elected officials and those who created the previous CPO. I arrive here tonight to state how important it is to strengthen the standing of the Cultural Protection Overlay, because St. Helena Island is the heartbeat of the Gullah Gichi culture, a community and culture that rose from the peculiar institution of slavery to become evolutionary and foundational culture to South Carolina and our nation. As a matter of fact, this Cultural Protection Overlay should not only be strengthened, but it should be replicated up and down the Gullah Gichi Cultural Heritage Corridor. In 2021, the Gullah Gichi Commission, Cultural Heritage Commission, issued a market research study noting, "Gullah Gichi tourism potential is $34 billion annually, not because of minimum wage jobs that are always dangled as a carrot from golf course developers, other developers, as if that will somehow fill the wealth gap that is rooted in the extraction of the richness from our enslaved ancestors' struggle." But through the $34 billion potential, it will happen because it is rooted in the character of our rural spaces to promote the health, safety, and welfare of Beaufort citizens. Let us acknowledge that without health, there is no wealth. Without safety, there is no ownership. Without welfare, there is no economic resilience and environmental justice. This economic resilience leads to the Gullah Gichi Sifu Trail, which will launch in August 2023, an intentional marketing tool reaching a global audience showcasing the richness of the Gullah Gichi culture. But this $34 billion potential, this Gullah Gichi Sifu Trail cannot happen if the asset, the Gullah Gichi culture, if the asset, the Gullah Gichi people, if the asset, the Gullah Gichi way of life, if the asset, St. Helena Island, faces additional harm through the weakening of the Gullah Gichi Protection Overlay. So I implore you to strengthen the CPO, to protect the people, the culture, and the economic resilience, but to also take a step to make potential a reality. Thank you.
Okay, that will conclude our public input on this item. I now ask for a motion and second for the reading of the ordinance and text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I shall do move.
We have it done by Mr. Glover as the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson as the second. Dooley motioned and seconded, and now we're open for discussion from the council members.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak, if you don't mind, first.
No.
I think, in summary, without rehashing what has been said, I think Mrs. Hemingway can sum up everything I would want to say. But I would love to add to the conversation that this CPO was, committee was charged with bringing us a language not to change the CPO in the comp plan, it was actually to strengthen and to clarify what was in the comp plan, and for that, I want to commend the committee for doing just what council asked them to do. It had nothing to do with any development at this time. It had to do with, how do we make the CPO a stronger district in language? And so they have done that, and I am hoping that this council will pass on this so that it can actually serve as a model going forward in our district, because the state has allowed for this type of overlay district to protect the culture of a community, and that's all it's doing. Has nothing to do with development, and has nothing to do with the standard that's already in place. And if any company that wanted to come to St. Helena to buy land for development, et cetera, they should adhere to the comp plan, which is in outline. And I know the exact place where Pine Island interest is, that was actually farmland. I will speak to, that's my first time on that property. It was actually a farmer named S.B. Wright. He farmed that land, and with that, I did not know that I was actually on St. Helenville. I learned that later. But I was actually a part of that back in the 80s, when he was actually farming that land. And then he mentioned a name to me of the property owner, the Hanners, and I never knew who the Hanners were until later on. But they were timber buyers, they were timber a company, and that land actually was producing timber for their business in Estill. I learned that later on. And they have other holdings on St. Helena as well, in Timber acreage. So that's my history now. So I ask that we move forward with the CPO. It's a community initiative, it's a community position that they're wanting for their district on St. Helena. Has nothing to do with outside people coming in, has nothing to do with money, it is their culture that they are trying to protect. And we should not be subject to finance when it comes to the protection of that community. Money should not have anything to do, an investor wanting to pay X amount of dollars for property, that's their business, but they should not dictate what this community is asking us to do. That's all.
Other comments?
I would like to speak.
Ms. Brown.
I'm a new member of county council here, and there's a lot I have had to learn, a lot I don't understand, a lot of reading. This is what I see, and this is what I hear. What I hear, what I see. I hear that Mr. Tropino met with county council early on. I heard Mr. Tropino met with other members of this council. They were contacted. I was never contacted. I was never contacted to speak with Mr. Tropino. So you know what I did? I do what I did when I was in the private sector, where I've been all my life. I found Mr. Tropino's contact information, I contacted him and invited him to lunch. We sat down and we spoke, and I immediately said to him, "I do not want to talk about your job, I don't want to talk about my job." We talked about a famous sports writer, we talked about the FBR Open, we talked about immigration, and we talked about Italian food. And he deeply respected my wishes. Now, I keep hearing, I keep hearing, Boston developer, Boston developer. No. Mr. Tropino moved here to Beaufort County two years ago, two years ago, from New York City, New York City, not Boston, New York City. He came here as a private equity guy, not a hedge fund manager that I keep hearing about, because I used to be in private equity myself, so I understand what he's talking about, but I'm sure a lot of people here do not, and I totally understand that. But he came here two years ago, after working for 15 years on Wall Street, as a private equity guy, not a hedge fund manager. Then I hear, oh, he's a front man for something. No. Mr. Trobino bought this land himself. If you have worked on Wall Street for 15 years, then you can very well afford an $18 million property. Now, let's talk about the crabbing. There was a nice, wonderful gentleman here a couple months ago, came forward, and he talked about crabbing, and I, God bless him, I don't know who he is, I don't know if he's here today or not, but he talked about crabbing, and I'm from Maryland, I know all about crabbing. My great uncle's crabbed, and the gentleman that stood here and said, "I only got a dollar a pound for my crab," well, lucky you, because my great uncles, they only got 50 cents. I understand today, from this packet that we were just given, the waters, here's a map, I don't know if Sarah can put this up on the screen or not, here's a map, waters are restricted from shellfish growing, harvesting around Pine Island, because Morgan Island is across the way, and it's polluted. That's my understanding. Now, there are 11,562 residents on St. Helena, I can't, sorry, I'm sorry, St. Helena, all right? I have heard from people across the country, I have heard from people from Minnesota, Atlanta, Pauli's Island. This issue is between the people who live on St. Helena, nobody else, and the other residents of Beaufort County. The people that live on St. Helena should be sitting down with Mr. Trobino and discussing this stuff. Yes, they should. We've only heard the 500 people, excuse me, the 500 people that were at the meeting a couple weeks ago, out at the elementary school, that was, I was told 500 people? So if you take 500 people and divide in 11,562 residents, that's only 5% of the residents we've heard from. I want to hear from everybody, but I don't want to hear from someone in Atlanta, or New York, or San Juan, or wherever else, because really, as far as I'm concerned, it's none of their business. This is about St. Helena and protecting the Gullah Gichi community. And another thing, I think the people here are not thinking about the future generations that are coming up behind us. No, I don't think you are. I don't think you are. Because I only think you're thinking about today, tomorrow, next week, and next month. Okay. What happens?
This is not a dialogue between...
What happens next year?
But she said that...
I understand.
...when the gold trim of this flag comes down. Nobody's thinking about that. Yeah, I know.
Mr. Chairman, she's engaging the community.
I understand that.
Okay, okay, I'll shut up. I'll shut up. You're right, I don't. You're right. But to be fair, to be fair, do I think there should be a golf course, another golf course in Beaufort County? No. Because I live on a golf course, and it's had, it's had four, it's had three owners in four years. But all I'm asking for here is fairness. I think that, I think that the Queen and Mr. Tropino should sit down and discuss all this.
Not me privately, ma'am.
No, 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 stop, stop, stop!
Mr. Chairman, she's asking for it.
Oh, okay, I'm asking for it.
End it!
I'm no at this, I'll end this, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, this is one short statement I'd like to make. I know we did the public hearing that was published and required by law, but I think we should take it one step farther and actually do a town hall meeting, and have an opportunity for more people to come in, devote a specific amount of time to allow the community to address us, and have that topic be the only topic. I don't know if we can get that set up or how to coordinate that, but I do think that would be a wise decision to hear from the public and open it up to everyone.
You're on St. Helena. And I apologize for being no at this.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Mr. McKellen.
I think everyone here knows where I stand on this issue, because I've spoken very clearly on it in the past. I support the strengthening of the CPO, and I think everyone knows that. I'm very anxious, though, to hear from everyone here their opinion on how we proceed, and I've heard very clearly that people do not want this development to take place on St. Helena, even as we discuss strengthening the CPO. But I want to look at this with very clear eyes and make sure that everybody has a very clear understanding of what's going to happen as we proceed here. Since our last meeting, Mr. Tropiano has submitted another application for development on his property. This application is for a residential community. When people talk about this, they say, "We don't want a golf course." No one has ever said to me, "I'd love to have 150 homes on that island." I've never heard anybody say that. I've never heard anybody say that, but that's our reality here tonight, and I want to be sure that everybody is clear on that as we proceed. There's an application for a residential community, and residential communities are allowed under our zoning code, okay? This proposal does not include a resort, it does not include a gated community, and it does not include a golf course, because I think he sees the way this is going. The staff hasn't looked at this application, they've not yet met with Mr. Tropiano. However, it appears that the residential community is designed to be a by right development, which means it's a development that is allowed under the zoning code. which means it's a development that is allowed under the zoning code. These developments do not go to the planning commission for approval. They do not come to council for approval, or to any of its committees for review or approval. If the development complies with the development code that's in place, it's approved at the staff level. This hap, this happens, this, this happens every day. And if this proposal complies with the zoning code, then staff will be required by law to approve it. But I haven't heard anybody say in the audience, or in any of the letters I've received, we'd love to have 150 houses on Pine Island. I'm not sure if they think you're abusing me or agreeing with me. So while I appreciate it, thank you very much. I know what you're doing. What you want is the information to come out, and I get that. I get that. So what does this proposal include? And I think you need to know this, because we have to deal with this, and so do you. This proposal is for 168 homes. 100 private docks, a clubhouse, and a community dock with several slips. The environmental concerns of 168 houses, 168 septic tanks, 168 deep water wells, and the infrastructure needed to support all of this troubles me greatly. And it should, it should trouble you as well. But it's allowed under the zoning code. Well, now, don't get ahead of me. Please, don't get ahead of me. I'm doing okay so far. This, the, the, the vehicles on our roads from the Woods Memorial Bridge all the way through St. Helena concern me. The traffic will impact our already overburdened roads, bridges, and intersections. It will impact the communities through which it will travel. And large residential developments impact county services like fire, emergency services, stormwater, infrastructure and oversight, sheriff services, community service. All of these things come to mind, there's probably a lot more. In addition to all this, the visual blight of 100 docked along the waterfrontage of this community and other large parcels should give all of us concern. These issues have repeatedly been the focus concern and concern of the Rural and Critical Lands Board. They have been cited by the board repeatedly as the reason county council should use public money to purchase large tracts of land for preservation. People have suggested we should buy this land.
Yes.
And then what? And then what?
Again, again, we're not going to have dialogue.
I know, I know, I know. These issues are not unique to the development of Pine Island. They are common to development of all parcels, but especially large parcels on St. Helena. Our legal department has worked with the Cultural Protection Overlay Committee. It's heard from many lawyers who focus their practice of law in land preservation. Most of the letters the county committee has received are included in tonight's backup materials. Some of the cases deal with land preservation issues that are also included in tonight's backup. One thing all the lawyers who practice in this area will agree on is that government cannot adopt zoning regulations that deprive a property owner of all rights to develop his or her property. A property owner, to do so is a violation of both the United States Constitution and the South Carolina Constitution. Interestingly, the South Carolina Supreme Court has addressed this issue twice just this month. These two cases are also in tonight's backup. And while the actions taken by the governmental entities involved, Folly Beach and Myrtle Beach, were found to be constitutional, the opinions highlight the delicate balancing act that's required. I think we can do better here. I believe we can do a lot better. I believe we have a duty to the community to at least try to do better. I don't want to win this battle and lose the war. I do not want to win this battle and lose the war. You're fighting to keep a golf course off your community. I want you to consider 150 homes that are allowed to be built there. So here's what I'm doing tonight. I'm asking for some time. You're not going to like my request. Nobody knows the whole story here. Nobody's worked together to try and solve this problem to give everybody who has a stake in this venture something that will satisfy them. It has become a war. There's no doubt about it. For these reasons, what I'd like to do, and you're not going to like this, I'd like to postpone this vote tonight to give us time to invite all the stakeholders to a place where we can try and do the best we can for everybody. Because if you win the battle and prevent a gated community, and a resort, and a golf course, you're going to get 150 houses, 100 docks. I know you don't want them, but...
Yes, it is.
That's what I'm trying to let, just a minute, just a minute. I'm trying to let you know that there is a way for that to be accomplished. And what I'm encouraging us to do here is, give me and us some time to work this out so that doesn't happen. That's what I'm asking you for. I know you want to work it out. I want that time. I can't do it in two weeks. I'd like to postpone this vote tonight to May 28th, two council meetings from now, but we still have to have a third vote. But in that time, what I'd like to try and do is get everybody interested in reaching a solution here. As David said, to come together so we can all move forward and satisfy everyone so that everybody walks away satisfied with what the end will be.
I will second that motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
So duly motioned and seconded.
Okay, okay, okay. I need some time. We could, listen, we don't have to postpone this one. We could postpone the third one. I would like to hold this off and come back with a full complement of information that everybody has participated in and presented. And then you decide what it is you really want to have at these meetings we have. That's all. That's all. Not tonight, and not here, not tonight, and not tonight, and not here. But I'm going to ask this committee, this council, to hold off on this vote. I'm going to make a motion to amend this so we can postpone this second reading to May 28th.
22nd. 22nd. It's May 22nd. It's May 22nd. May 22nd. Okay. Hold on a second. It was duly motioned and seconded. Now we're going to have a discussion on just the postponement.
That's the amendment that I've just made the motion for.
Right.
Mr. Glover. Sure, thank you. I don't understand time, Mr. McKellen, because even if we pass on this second reading, there's still time.
I know.
So, so I can't support your motion. I think you're looking for time, and I don't know, even with time, what kind of results you will come back with. But, so I can't support your motion. I also think that we are muddying the water by including development in the, the language changing of the CPO. Has nothing to do, has nothing to do...
It's not in there. I'm just saying, that's the other alternative that everybody needs to be made aware of. Listen, whether they like it or not, that's the zoning code we live with here. But I'm not sure everybody ever considered that, because all I have here is, we don't want anything.
I think the owner has made that very clear from day one, that he has the option to put in more units than this, and he's made that very clear. The, the CPO will allow for three units, I mean, three acres per unit. So that's very clear. So the community knows that. Now, the impact becomes a different story, but I don't see why delaying this at this time will get us any end results. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Bartholomew.
I just want to ask, have we discussed the pending ordinance doctrine? Has that gone out to the people?
We have. They do understand.
The process there. I didn't know if maybe we need to have legal come up and do a brief.
Everybody understands that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I cannot support delaying it at this time. I do think the public is, is well informed of by right what can be done on this piece of property. There are other avenues. When you apply for a dock, you have to go to South Carolina DHEC. I mean, you know, there, when you get a septic tank, you have to apply. So I think there's, yes, by right, maybe 150 houses, but I don't see any value in delaying today's vote. And as, as Councilman Glover said, we'll, we'll have another chance at third reading too, so.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, I, I concur with Councilman Glover and Councilwoman Howard. I don't see a need to delay our vote tonight. We, we need to go ahead and pass it on second reading and allow the, the time between now and the third reading to have the town hall, make it clear that the public understands that the, the buy right portion of what we're dealing with, every, every property owner in Beaufort County has a buy right. And it needs to be made clear, and I think the property owner, he made it clear to us at one of our past meetings of the potential of number of homes and docks that he can put on this property by right. And so the community needs to understand that while, while they don't want the golf course, you can't, you can't stop the property owner from what's entitled to him by the current zoning that's on the property. So, so to think that nothing is going to happen on, on this piece of land, I, I think if that's, if that's the case, I think you might have been misled. Because I, I spoke to Mr. Brown at the last meeting, and he and I talked about the buy right that this gentleman has to develop this property. So I'm, I'm of the impression that the community doesn't want the golf course, but if the community doesn't want any development, then, then that's a, that's a dilemma that I, I think the town hall might be beneficial in having this discussion, because the end result is that something is going to happen on that property. It's not going to stay as it is. So if not the golf, golf course, then you're going to have X number of homes built on that property. So I'm, I'm going to vote to move this forward on tonight, on to the third, third reading.
Anyone else? Mr. Cunningham and then Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll be brief. I think Mr. McKellen summed it up very well. I will say there's a couple of things that worry me on both sides of this. One, we just have been spending all this time talking about Pine Island, when Pine Island is not even on this agenda. But we all know that this ordinance overlay is specifically targeted towards this current project, which frankly, we should not even be pushing through as fast as we are. These recommendations came to us, they opened it back up in January, talking about recommendations. And we're here in April on a second reading, trying to push this through on the county, which is a very fast process for us. First time it was lifted, it even said time urgent manner, because it was aimed towards Pine Island, which I discussed last time. Which I've said, I do think time is exactly what we need. I spent the last two weeks trying to find out as much information as possible. The first thing I'll do is the correction on myself with the way the land was subdivided. I stated that it was 15 years ago, it was not. It was about a year, year and a half ago where it was subdivided. The parcel, which was passed by the county approval, and that is because documents were put in place over 50 years ago for development of that island, and it met those requirements. Way before the CPO, way before any of us were on council, and before that overlay committee was even talked about. So it met the requirement. I also have found out that there's only one of us on council, not one, not to get into who, or what, or how, but only one of us has been out to the island with Mr. Tropiano, and that was over a year ago. So to say that that information is new, it was public knowledge, it was posted out to the public when that council member met with him. So there is information I'm continuing to find out. But I think time is exactly what we need, as Mr. McKellen stated. I think this gives us the opportunity to get all facts out to the public and see what the best situation is for all of Beaufort County. People continue to say, purchase the land. Mathematically, that's not feasible. Even if we could get it for at cost, there, the funding is not there for that. You're still talking at $20 million, even if we use the green space money. That's not an option, because in the law it states that it has to be spread equally throughout the county. And more than likely, well, one, you can't force anybody to sell any land. They still have to be open to do it. And a person that's going to go in interest of making money is not going to sell it for at cost. I guarantee you, that's double or triple. So we're talking 40 to 60 million dollars. It's not a feasible option. So the best option I see for us is to figure out how we can satisfy not only the land's owner, as well as the community. And the only way to do that is to get together and figure that out. Because right now, we do not have an option on the table like that. So I will support Mr. McKellen's delay. I think it was summed up perfectly. And I, I think that should be the direction we go, by the time we need to get the information out, have the presentation, to give people time to digest what our options are.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, thank you. I think that I read somewhere where St. Helena is 56 square miles. So we're talking about a lot more than just Pine Island. And it's something that, you know, having our first reading, our position is protected. I, after hearing Mr. McKellen's eloquent description, we have nothing to lose by, by waiting. I know we've talked about strengthening the CPO, that doesn't need strengthened. But obviously, there's a reason that this was brought forward to strengthen it, was because there was a thought, there was a possibility that there were some areas that needed to be strengthened. So even though we're just looking at, at strengthening the CPO, there's a lot more to this. And, you know, as we add more restrictions to the property, you know, it sort of increases the value to the property owner. It usually increases the value to, to people who don't own the property. So again, as we stop and think about this and look at the big picture, I think that Mr. McKellen said, you know, you win the battle but lose the war. You know, my position is to try to protect the other property owners of St. Helena for the long run. So we need to figure this out and look at this as a long-term solution and not as a short-term solution. So obviously, at this point, you know, delaying it is not going to change our position. It doesn't change where we sit right now legally. So I would be willing to also consider Mr. McKellen's motion to delay it for at least a couple of weeks, and we can get more information, get people to give their input, and find out where we are.
Thank you. Is there any council member who has not spoken, wish to speak on the amendment? Ms. Tavernick?
I'm just curious, if we delay it, what exactly is going to happen in the interim? I, I mean, you know, to kick the can down the road just to do it is not helpful. What exactly will we be doing to, in the next month? We're going to have a town hall, we talked about it. Okay, what exactly else will we do?
I believe there are people who would like to see no change take place on Pine Island, and I need time to meet with them, to talk to them, see how interested they are in making a commitment to keep that island unchanged. That's why I'm asking for the time. Sounds mysterious, but it's really, that's really all I can tell you. I have no dog in this fight. I'm doing what I think I can to help everybody who wants to keep things the way they are, because the way we're moving forward, it's not going to stay the way you want it. And I need a chance to make it stay the way you want it. That's all I'm asking for. Because if we vote tonight to, to move this forward, we vote again in two weeks, and then that's the third reading, and it takes place. I don't know if I can do that in two weeks. And I don't know if it makes a difference. We could strengthen it, and then I can just keep working. I was just looking for some breathing room. So whether... So whether we vote it down, or whether we move it forward, I'll just keep doing what I'm doing and hope for the best.
Mr. Chairman, I had a legal question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it not true that we could do it tonight, and we could, we could delay the third reading? There's no, nothing says we have to do it within two weeks. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. We have a motion and second on the floor to delay our second reading until May 22. Okay, the motion and second was, Mr. McKellen, you'll vote first?
I'm going to vote last, if you don't mind.
And then, Mr. Cunningham, please call the roll. Unfortunately, you made the motion, you have to vote first.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yeah, I want to do it in the best interest of everyone, so I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, yes, I would delay, I would vote to delay it, so yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew? Chairman Passamit?
I'm going to say yes. We are tied. Therefore, the motion is defeated.
I call for the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do the motion and seconded for the second reading. Would you call the roll, please? Mr. Glover goes first?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson goes second.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Uh, no, and I do believe we are doing a government overreach, I just want to state that.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Eight yes, two no. Okay. Our next item on our agenda is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to accept and to appropriate funds received from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to comment on that?
Yes.
Please come forward.
If you wish to leave, please leave quietly, so we can continue the meeting. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. In terms of these fundings, in terms of the, of this opioid, opioids that's been going on in this community, you know, this goes along the lines of things that I have been talking about within the community, about finding things for the youth to do. In terms of the library, we're inviting businesses into this county, and we're giving people the, we're giving certain people breaks. This opioid, it's just going to continuously happen. We have to find more ways to find things for the younger generation to do, because if not, this is going to continue happening. I mean, we have to be proactive instead of reactive, right? And this is, this is one of those reactive measures. So I challenge you, and I charge this board with coming up with something that's going to help counter what's happening and why we have to spend the funding for tonight's, for this bill right here. That's a nice way to put it, because that's some other choice of words, but in terms of, we're going to have this as a county. Because we, the amount of drugs that are in this community, we won't have enough jails to hold the people. So jail ain't the option. We have to put more resources to help the people out, and we have extra funds and other funding to let the community know that we ain't just about building up, throwing up buildings, just to say that we're throwing up buildings and hiring, and hiring people to make the county look good in the paper. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. May I have a motion and second for item 12?
My pleasure, so moved.
Mr. McKellen?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I want to, I don't want to engage in a conversation, but want to at least make Mr. Smith aware that this is a grant, and as a recipient, we're applying for a grant, and that the alcohol and drug-
No, it's not a grant. It's not a grant. This is the opioid settlement.
Settlement.
Got you, got you. But it's, I apologize for that, but it is one where we are, we're going to direct into our alcohol and drug abuse program and director, because a lot of these fundings are coming through that agency.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would also point out to the public that if they look in the agenda packet at item 12, these funds are going to create three FTEs to enhance medical, medication-assisted treatment, detention center, and emergency room warm handoff programming, which I learned what that was. But this is through our Beaufort County alcohol and drug abuse. So this has nothing to do with after-school programs for children or any of that. This is specific for opioid abatement.
I agree. And my comment is that his ideas, his concern, I want him to go to the alcohol and drug abuse to see how that can be incorporated, if it can be incorporated, in your statement, that's all.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments?
He's absolutely right. You cannot arrest your way out of this problem. This is for, this is for prevention, and education, and treatment, and rehabilitation. That's what the purpose of this money is, because we recognized long ago, you cannot arrest your way out of this problem.
And it, and it does involve us having a relationship and strengthening our relationship with the Beaufort County School District to do just that. That money, this money will be used for that. We have engaged the superintendent of education. He has put us in touch with appropriate folks on his staff, and we are continuing to build, make great strides in our relationship with them, to put together some quality programming, so that the children are aware of what these drugs can do.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, briefly, I'm glad that you all said it as well. This is us receiving funds, to use it for the exact things that Mr. McKellen just lifted, just to make sure there is no misinformation out there. This is not us spending money, this is us receiving money to use it for those exact resources that have been labeled. Unfortunately, and I hope, I hope the island packet is in the audience right now.
Yes.
Perfect. I hope it's Sebastian.
It is.
Yes, it is.
This is the type of stuff I would love to see in the island packet, because a lot of the times, the public doesn't realize we are doing these things, and we are taking these steps. And I hope we can continue to get that knowledge out to the rest of the community, that this board right now is taking a stand on the opioids, trying to make changes for the better, just like we did for workforce housing, and continue to get that knowledge out, and I'm glad we can just set that record straight. Thank you.
Mr. Passamit, one more thing. Mr. Greenway said something that I don't want missed in the audience, and that is that he's working with the superintendent. He has a relationship with him, I talked to the superintendent at an event, they are working together to bring the county with the schools, because we all serve the same people. And so I do want to commend the effort Mr. Greenway's doing, and however Dr. Rodriguez wants to relate that to their school board, is up to him.
Yeah, that, I was going to make that point. Thank you for doing that. My communication with towns, municipalities, and any other elected board in the Beaufort County is to their administrative officer. It's not appropriate for me to contact elected officials unless they reach out to me directly and ask me a question, then I'll respond, but I am not going to contact any elected official that I do not work for, and that's only 11 of you all.
But I do want the community to understand there's a relationship.
Yeah. Okay. There any further comments?
No.
Please.
We're happy to have you here, but you can't just come in and disrupt the meeting.
The lawsuit that we had, too, is that what y'all were talking about, too? The one where y'all stopped recording our meetings, and we had to use YouTube? So let's be careful how we start talking and how we go to war with each other now. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. This, the second reading will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing none, item number 12 is approved. Item number 13 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds received from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund.
So moved, sir.
Second.
I'll be second again.
You have to do the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, public hearing.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public wishes to comment about this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. It was duly motioned and seconded. Sarah, who did you get for the second? Because I heard three people.
I heard Mr. Cunningham.
That's what I thought, I put down as well. Okay, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a lease agreement encumbering property owned by the Beaufort County known as a portion of Crystal Lake Park Office Building. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment about this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have, Ms. Howard made the motion, Ms. Brown made the second. Duly motioned, seconded. Any questions?
No.
No discussion. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 15 is our third reading of an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, rezoning request for 2.81 acres at the intersection of Oakley Highway, which is 170, and Low Country Drive, which is also known as 462, from T2 Rural to C4 Community Center Mixed Use.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard made the motion, Ms. Tavernick made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Number 16 is approval of a resolution authorizing the demolition of structures on county-owned property now known as Cherry Point Preserve located on Highway 170. A motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Our final item is recommend approval of a resolution to purchase an ambulance from Beaufort County Emergency Medical Service Budget Surplus. Motion?
So moved.
I'll motion that.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Mr. Dawson made the motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just for anyone who didn't hear you in the past, could you tell them why this is a great opportunity?
This is an excellent opportunity in that this particular ambulance was on the assembly line for some other entity who backed out of it. We were next in line. It takes as many as 18 months to get an ambulance. They called us and said, "Do you want it? It is not finished yet, it can be customized to your specifications." We jumped on that. It will be purchased out of this year's budget, rather than next year's budget. It saves us a great deal of money.
And time.
And time, excellent. Duly motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? This item will be accepted without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, we are at our last section, which is citizen comments. Mr. Hoagland, you wish to address us on non-agenda items. You have three minutes, sir?
Basically anything, right? I mean, it could be agenda or non-agenda.
Well, it says non-agenda, we've done our agenda, so non-agenda.
Well, actually, because of the issues at hand, and the importance of what's going on here tonight, I'm not even going to read my speech that I had, I'm going to make another comment, and these are things that I have not heard from everybody in this Pine Island issue, and this is, I mean, I really feel for these people here tonight, and I really want to do all I can to help them. The first thing I would like to know was what the owners would take. Will they sell Pine Island? How much they want? How much they want for it? Let's find that out. Number two is, let's figure out how much money we can raise locally with the Senator Davis 1% tax, and then let's figure that out, and let's also defund the chambers and the CBBs and the DMOS, they're not needed. So let's take those millions that the tourists can help us raise money, and let's take that money to the 1% sales tax for Senator Davis. Mr. McKellen, you with me?
I'm with you.
Okay. Now, all right, thank you very much. Now, let's also explore buying Pine Island with the state. Let's do what Georgia did. Let's do what some other states did, to protect our coastline. There's a big difference between South Carolina and Georgia. And I'm from Georgia, and my family's and my relatives are from Georgia, and they also donated land, significant amounts of land on the coast of Georgia. But I'm not going to get into that private business of my family, but it was substantial. And they donated, and they were made, it was made easy for them to donate it, to protect land on the coast of Georgia, because they got tax incentives. They got reduction in their federal taxes, income taxes, and things of this sort. So let's explore the state turning this into a potential state park. Okay, we saw what happened with Bay Point, and actually, my wife owned a little island not too far from Bay Point that we just sold, and hopefully, that'll end up in good hands. Now, the other thing we can explore is the feds. My relatives were involved in a federal park, and they booted the, they had the choice, either donate their substantial amounts of property for a federal park and the federal government, or Charles Fraser would come down and develop that area in Georgia. Nobody wanted the development, they wanted to protect the environment for future generations. And that's what we're dealing here, we're dealing with future generations, our children, our grandchildren, because we are in big trouble. We all have to admit, these owners of this Pine Island have to admit, environmentally, we're in trouble, overdevelopment, we're in trouble, traffic, we're in trouble. We're in trouble, big trouble, and we got to do something. So let's look at that. So let's, let's work with these owners, find out what they want, we can negotiate, downplay that money, and we can let them, maybe the federal government, and talk with the state, and let's see if we can't reduce the taxes on some of their other income sources they have, and maybe we can get a real deal here, because who cares if they don't pay federal tax or income tax and some of their other money? Let's, let's work that out, and let's go to the table with these owners, and let's buy them out. They go back to New York and do what they want, okay? Thank you.
Hold on. The second person who signed up was Lynn Greeley.
I was going to, I know, let me finish, let me finish. I was going to speak for Lynn Greeley, we're going to do it another time, another day. We've had enough here tonight, enough time's been taken.
Thank you.
Ms. Greeley, I'm not going to speak for her, but when I come back, I will speak for her. Prepare yourself, thank you.
We appreciate the warning.
Okay. Is there any other person? Yes, sir, what would you like to say to us?
This thing about putting in 163 homes, I haven't heard, I haven't missed a meeting. I haven't heard anyone say anything about a professional environmental impact study. Okay, professional buyer impact, not hired by the developer, but hired by an independent. What would be the impact of option A or B? What would be the impact? And get a professional study done. Trust, you know, someone said, politicians said, "Trust but verify." I don't understand how somebody can develop 163 homes or 50 homes in the city council, and they're given a blank check, and they can do whatever they want to do by right. I don't understand that. I mean, I can't put, well, I'm not mentioning, I can't put a bathroom in my house without talking to the county, but yet someone can develop an entire subdivision and not have to be approved by the county? That doesn't make any sense. We still in America, and, so those are the two things I mentioned. Environment, you've heard person after person after person come up and talk about they're afraid of the impact about the environment. Those who've been in the area for a long time, it used to be an Oyster factory, remember the island off of Hilton Head? the island off of Hilton Head, it used to be an Oyster factory there, and that was polluted, they went out of business. So that, that's very important. So that's, that's the thing. I don't think the county should throw up their hands at any point in time and say, "We don't have anything to do with this, here's a blank check." Do whatever you want to do, by, by right or by law. I mean, that's, doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name's James Smalls. I live on St. Helena Island. For 76 years, I lived on St. Helena Island. I used to go down to Lockins Crab Factory on St. Helena Island, down in Edgewood, Mary Jenkins area. I used to go from Cusaw, Haindato Island, Morgan, some of us called it Monkey Island, Pine Island, all those things. I was raised in that river. When I go out there and look on the coast off of the edge of Monkey Island, you guys making a beach, people out there now, up and down. So that means that when anything happen out there, it's going to be a change. One of the things that I want to say, there were about 15 black owners that had businesses on St. Helena Island. They all went down. Taxes, farmers, S.B. Wright was mentioned, Jack Johnson was mentioned, Simon Seepro was a great farmer, Johnny Jenkins was a great farmer. These were all black farmers. They all went down. There were people that owned grocery stores, gas stations, they all went down. All these businesses were created on St. Helena Island, but yet still, we got one way on, one way off. If the bridge's down, that mean you stuck. That means that we can't get off. I, I made comments about drainage, we talk about where the water going. In our backyard, in my backyard, we said that every time we come up with something, you're going to do a survey, and you're going to check, and we'll get back with you. Well, I've been waiting a long time, and we still ain't getting nothing, and I was told, I know I got 15, they said that we going to get a sidewalk, and say, "If you didn't take what, publicly, if you don't take what we give you, you don't get nothing." Well, you telling us one thing, we ain't getting nothing. All our activities for the kids, shut, shut down. Then you ask why the kids being bad. You closed them down. You did it. What you going to do next? You say, "Write a letter?" I wrote the letter. Nobody respond. But then, we put you there, because we want you to serve us. Nobody want to argue and holler and do things to make you mad. But what about us? What about them? How they feel? How we feel? No more rabbit, no more plum, no more blackberries, all these things. Some of you don't know what we talking about, but some of us have no. We don't have anything, now you going to say that too?
Thank you.
Don't worry, just wait and see. Don't worry.
Mr. Smalls.
So tonight, actually, my original was, was to come up here as well, and to speak about over in the St. Helena elementary, I mean, the St. Helena area, I was told that by the clinic, you know, that the county council was going to put up a, using, I guess, I'm not sure if they're using ESF funds or not, but you're going to put up a recreational facility over there. And this is my thing, I've come to this council for years, and I remember it started with Mr. Passamit, I remember you were supposed to be, before you were chairman, you were supposed to be liaison between the school board and Beaufort County Council. And then, and then now she telling me it's her. I've been asking for Beaufort County Council and the school board to get together before we deal with the budget. I've been, I've been asking this to do that forever. Then, then all of a sudden, when, when, when we got, when they supposedly got together, it was supposed to be, it was a, a financial budget meeting with certain, an officers meeting. Let me say this, right now, we have Beaufort County, we have Beaufort County pools on, on our facility, on, on the campuses, at the high schools. We have gyms. When I was growing up, I said, "Helena Gym, Parks and Recreation Services used to use those gyms." We have to stop pimping the community and using funding in areas that we wanted to use, because there's no reason why county council and the school board can't get, get together and share some of those facilities that we have for the greater of the community. We can pull, pool our resources to help these kids. And so that's why every chance I get, I'm going to come up here, and I'm going to speak about it, because I'm tired of going to funerals with the younger, with younger kids in this community. I'm tired of it. So yeah, you going to hear my voice. We have ESF funds, we let a county administrator get, come in with a group of people, and I sat in here on one of those meetings too, and they decided where some of those ESF funds go at, and then we, we had all these community meetings, and listen to people talking about how they want to play racquetball, and we made that tennis court happen overnight. Had a meeting at Green Street Gym, had a meeting at Scott Hall, and said, "Oh yeah, well, we know, well, we know, well, we know." Listen, reminds me of the meeting that, it, it almost opened up a bandaid when Mr. Mc, Mr. McMillan said that he wanted to have a meeting in terms of to find out what the community really wanted. The community is tired of having these meetings, and the county's not listening. The county's doing what they want to do with these funds. So I come to you today saying, let's get together and start using the school, the school board facilities and the, and the county facilities for the betterment of everyone, not just, not just for certain things and certain people. Because we have, we have great million-dollar, million-dollar facilities that we can get together, that we can share, so that we can, we can put more county funds to better, better our community. Point blank period. We can, we can do that. It starts with small things, libraries, gymnasiums. Look forward to doing that.
Is there any further action to come before county council before we adjourn? Seeing none, we are adjourned.